That meeting starts at 10 o'clock.
In Wilburton?
Clark, Clark serves on the board as well, so...
Alright, it's 10 o'clock, so we'll call the meeting ordered.
Hey, Ross Call, Paul Stewart.
Yeah.
Clark and Terry.
Here.
Sandra is actually.
We will recognize the guests. We would like to thank Danny and Steve for coming over from... Get over from Wilburton. Made our information. Get the year started off.
Look forward to working with y'all.
I've always been good to work with you.
Yes, I am.
You got that paper, you recognize the guest, can't you? Alright, we're recognizing the guests.
Yeah, it's already went around here. Yeah, it came back this way.
Let me have it ready.
Anyhow, paying good for this year?
I really don't know yet.
Oh, yeah.
If, uh... State budget is obviously struggling and... As, as the report this weekend came out that the state, their news has failed again. However, all the gas has kind of increased a little bit, but not nearly enough to offset it, so... At least we've seen a little of that. I think we're... I think we're headed for another tough financial year with the state. I think there has to be some things changed on the state level before we really see much relief out of our state budget.
Did they take a percentage of our REIT?
They've taken... Paul, in 10 years, REIT is almost at 50% of where it was at.
Well, I knew they'd been whittling at it, I just didn't know how far they'd whittled on it.
Yeah, it's right at 50%. It's, uh, last year had right at $9 million in it. Best year we ever had was a little over 17 million, Steve.
Yeah.
Is that gonna continue on?
Excuse me?
Are they gonna keep whittling on it until it's gone?
I... We have to believe that. I mean, we... I did meet with Speaker of the House the week of Christmas, and he had told me that, obviously, the... In the House, that's a very important program to them, and they would like to prop it back up to where it was funded at its best. How do they do that when there's something a hundred million dollars in the hole to start with? So, I mean, we're... I have to be realistic about that, but at the same time, I'm optimistic and hope that someday they do things. I just... I think they're gonna have to change some of the ways that they're doing business now to get some of these things back on track.
Will any increase in revenue to the state due to the economy affect this year? Or will it be... Does it come in as they get it, or does it have a...
Well, the revenue that they're bringing in right now is affecting the year that we're in, up until June 30th. But that obviously also, just like county government, that kind of sets a tone for what they do in the upcoming year as well. So, I guess really to answer that question, it would not surprise any of us to see that we take additional cuts in the year that we're in right now.
This year, even though 2017 may be a better year, it may be 18 before we see...
That's correct.
See the benefits of it.
Yes. And that's, and that's kind of where we're at with... When I say there's things that need to be changed on the state level, that's just an opinion. But if they did it this year, it would be a year before we would even see those impacts back to the state level, back to the agencies and things. So, it's nothing quick.
Right. That's what I was thinking it would be.
Yeah. And I think we have legislators that truly want to make some of those changes.
Right.
So...
I hope they do, because of Rick, yeah, that's been a blessing for small counties such as us. You know, that, that helps out a lot each summer.
Paul, not only the REIT, I mean, last year, I think y'all lost $80 million in your CI or VAC.
Yeah, we lost, yeah, $80 million on one fine.
The Speaker's quite aware of that, and, and I mean, some of those things that they want to protect this year that they...
They're after ETR too.
Yeah.
And the CBRI.
But when they have corrections and all of the EHS and all the other things that they're having problems with, they're not gonna be able to hold everything harmless.
Yeah, but my question is, without roads and bridges, what are you really having? I mean, everything comes across the road or a bridge. Every product you use.
I... Paul, I don't disagree with you, I just... I, I guess what I'm telling you is, I'm glad I'm on their shoes right now.
They always survive without roads and bridges.
Well, you can't... Anytime you have a short fall like this.
You know, Oklahoma Springs is about dead late, their 49th in the United States for roads and bridges.
Was that 80 million that that... Was that 80 million that hit the pavement? Or was that 80 million that was the administrative cost held out over?
That's 80 million hit the pavement. But what I consider pavement, because you got engineering failing, you had to pay engineers out there right away. I mean, everything it takes to get to the pavement road. Fire metal, everything.
As, as I was told, that $80 million did not take any program, projects off the street last year. It, it was projects that were in the planning phase, but if it's cut anymore, it will take projects off the street.
Yeah, I know, Danny, but I'm on this board up there. They only put them up there if there's money.
Yeah.
If the money's available, they'll go out for bids, so... Yeah, they're not taking them off because they don't put them on because the money's not there, so it's kind of a double-edged sword there.
Craig, it, it will affect upcoming projects, no, no question, Paul.
Because I'm gonna tell you, $80 million is a lot of money for county mer, county government.
77 counties?
77. So, you know, that's over a million dollars a county. I mean, that's, that's a lot of money for Assam County, not to...
No, no question. I was... And, and just to be clear about that, I will tell you, before, when I met with the Speaker, before I started through this, he... Those two projects are the REIT funding and, uh, the CI RB money, he brought up before I did. He's quite aware of that and does want to do what he can do to protect that. I think we're very fortunate to have a rural Speaker elected that understands what rural Oklahoma is.
Man, that $25 million in ETR, you know, they've been wanting to whittle on it too. Anyway, we're gonna... We've been talking about rural Oklahoma down to no business. Tim, did you, did you read that letter I gave you?
I did. We're in the process, we're going to go home to Sheriff's Association to get policy procedures in place at the jail and on the sheriff's office side.
I figured you was, but I just wanted to give you that.
We've got several different, we've got several different policies already been sent in to us. We're trying to get something that fits our facility. Once we do, we'll bring it to the county commissioners and let it be approved. Right now, we're sending 52 inmates for the, for the week. Immate numbers are rising because serving warrants, different things like that. We're trying, as we're getting these folks in on fare-to-pays, 90% of them are coming up with the money to pay to get back out. So, we've got six or seven we got to pick up this week throughout different counties that have been picked up on fare-to-pay warrants. No big problems this week, everything's going pretty smooth. Working on getting some touch-up painting, some lights and stuff fixed, it's, it's continuing going out. Other than that, nothing big, ready for next week's meeting and get this thing going the right way on the...
And that'll be 9 o'clock next Monday.
9 o'clock next Monday. Paul, I'm gonna take this and get with Katrina, so she...
Yeah, take it with you.
Okay.
Y'all want you to take it with you, because y'all... But you, we'll talk about it next Monday morning at 9 o'clock. And, uh... Tuesday, I'm sorry, we're off next Monday, apologize. Next Tuesday at 9 o'clock. But, uh, and I, we've talked about it, but Sandra's agreed to be on the Ketto Board, so... Danny, next week, we'll have it on the agenda. We'll appoint her to the board, and I'm sure she'll be there the following day to...
Sandra will probably...
Get introduced to everybody and see the process and look, know everything.
I'm going to assume all of that will happen, and I will have Kristi know you attack it out this week, so that you will at least understand what's on the agenda and all of those things. You bet.
Randy?
Tim, uh... The fellow Jeff Staples that was with All About You Plumbing, he is, I guess, went out on his own. And, uh, I'm gonna forward you the information that he sent me and, uh, so we can kind of keep moving on preparing the appointment there at the jail. But there's really no need of me being in the middle of it, you know? He needs to really deal direct with you and Katrina, and, uh, and that way, um... You know, just take one step out of the, out of the plan and maybe get something going. But, uh, I'll, I'll forward you that information, and he's supposed to start on Pod C, get it all up in shape, and then just kind of move from one pod to the other.
And we do want to use him instead of the All About You.
Well, he's the one that... This all came as a surprise to me, uh, late last week. When they came, it was both of them, and then when the email came, it was just him. But he is the one that takes care of McCallister's Jail and Uphalos and several others, so...
Sounds good.
He knows what he's doing. There's same thoughts that he did. So, we'll, we'll get that... We're gonna do some expenditures for parts that he's been... Taken care of, and then move on to the next pod and just keep doing, to get all of them fixed.
Sounds good.
I did get a call from Scott Fraser, y'all remember him? He's at OSU, did the audit on energy here at the courthouse. Uh, he's gonna mail that to me. I asked him to email it, but he said he'd rather mail it, so he's gonna mail it to me, and when he does, I'll get copies to everybody. I don't know how intense or involved it is. As far as the price property, uh, they've been looking at the EMS, the abstract's not completed as, as they thought it would be. They thought they'd have it this week, but, uh, expected the end of this week and then to go straight to Jim Spencer title opinion. And, uh, I did go in for a few of the brothers on condition, Danny. Whether to do this or not, just so everybody knows what we're talking about. For a 72 by 75 foot building, making up tall enough, 14 foot doors there. It's, uh, just the building itself, the structure's $35,000, $341. And I'll work up the rest of the cost if, if that's what we're gonna, if we're moving in that direction. If not, whatever, we'll set it aside. Rick had come up with some pretty good ideas about trying to put in one to where maybe get those ambulances in there. We'll do some more figuring on that, and I don't think we've come to a final decision as to what we're gonna try to do there, but, uh, if we could, uh, we might be able to use the same structure. So, take a little more investigation. Earlier last month, at the end of the year, we talked about the $56,000 that the pipeline proceeds came in. Clark, I believe you agreed that we're probably out of earmark of that since it's a windfall to go towards the junior debt. Uh, so I'm, you know, I'll be...
Be agreeable with my thought.
And do we know where that money was deposited, or it went into the MNOs of the three districts? Okay, so what actions are we gonna need to take that out in earmark?
It's too late that went in there. Can't take it out of there. Now, what $50,000 are you talking about?
The highway, the pipeline.
Down the pipeline.
Why can't you take it out?
Because it's in the MNO.
Yeah, and put it in the MNO, you can take it out.
I know, but anything that goes into Highway T can only legally be spent on roads, bridges, trucks, it's, you know, what you use to shop. It can't be... We couldn't use it to, for anything else besides roads.
Can you take it back out?
Well, we can check on it, Randy. We'll check on it, but I don't, I don't let you take it out.
If it's, if it's a windfall, you know, we're still sitting here looking at this junior debt coming due here in a couple of years. It came exact in 2024, and some people, that might seem like a long time away, but to come up with that much money between now and then with no source, we better be trying to look at every avenue we can to, to accommodate that loan. We are going to start vigorously working on the curtain property, uh, to try to get that, but it's, it's out there, and we don't know if we can achieve that or not. But we probably should be addressing the, uh... You know, the debt as it stands right now, we've got $204,000 earmarked in there. The debt's gonna be 408, and, uh, if we, if there's any way possible, we can get that money gathered up early before 2024, we could go to the bank and pray on them to release us from that bond. And if we could, that's gonna save the county $26,000 a year in interest that we're paying right now. That's, that's one of the hemorrhages right now that's causing the shortfall in money, that $26,000 going out the window.
Well, you think, you think we could talk to them and see if they'd take the money that we have set aside and maybe cut that payment, interest payment in half? Is that a possibility?
I don't know, Paul. That's just something we've gotta do, but, uh, number one, we don't have the money. We just have the money set aside.
Right. It's something that we could spend it on that.
Well, then what are you gonna do if your county runs short?
That's true, but, well, we'd be saving $13,000 a year interest. I mean, I don't know if it's possible or not, I'm just saying it's something we could talk about next Monday.
I know, I know this, it's a, it's a bond issue, just like the original ones were. And, but I feel like if, if we could apply enough money and, and make it, you know, worthwhile, I don't think they're gonna want to write us another bond for half the money. But if we had all the money, that might be a different story.
Well, I'd rather have all the money, Randy, than all that money left.
But that's, uh, you know, right now, the debt's standing at $408,000, but this $26,000 a year that's hemorrhaging from the county right now is, is, is a sharp pain at, at the moment. The other one's gonna be a stake in art in 2024 if we don't have all the money for it. So, uh, it's just something that we need to address, and we did bring this up in earlier meetings, that we would try to do that, and nobody moved on it. But if, I'm, I'm, I know this, I'm confident that if the commissioners put it in the account, the commissioners can take it out of the account.
You think we can do that, Danny?
I'm not sure, Paul. What, what I would encourage you to do, I mean, to me, common sense tells me that if we put it in there and it's not earmarked for that purpose, that, that the commissioners would have the right to take it out of there. But I think you ought to go to state auditor and ask him, tell him what's happened, and ask for an opinion to take that out and use it. I understand what this gentleman is saying, is if you've got that $50,000 to make that bond requirement with what little revenue there is, is you better take advantage of every opportunity you have so that you can meet that obligation in a short period of time.
Yeah, 2024 will be here before you know it, if you're not getting ready for it.
I used to not worry about those dates, Paul, but they seem to come around pretty quick anymore.
Hey, I agree, Randy, we, we have to think about it now, so...
You, you mentioned the park land, we had talked about putting that trust back together or whatever, did you make any headway on that? What we did because of the elections and everything else, I have got the people that were originally on it that are still alive to volunteer to go back on it. I feel it'd be in the best interest of everybody, especially when we address the federal government, that if they see some of the names that were originally on the original trust, it's gonna be better than all the brand in the community. So, I've asked them, and they've agreed to do that, and we're gonna vigorously start working on it. It did get set aside until after the first year, or it's after the first. And I have discussed this with several people in the past two weeks. I talked to Sandra about it this morning, and we are gonna continue on that. I'd still like to cover the ground, horseback, and see, you know, evaluate if this, is there potential there for building stone. You know, I just want to investigate the property real well to see all the avenues that would, might make it bring money if we obtain the ownership of it. If we could do that, and we get it sold, we're gonna have junior debt taken care of. But it, right now, it's just a...
That's up and right.
A burden out there on the bush right now that we're trying to catch, so... But if we could apply that $56,000 windfall from the pipeline, we'd only be looking at $148,000 from debt on that junior loan, and we're a whole lot closer than we were. We're moving pretty much from nothing to, to this. But the intent would be to try to gather up enough money to get that thing knocked out and get rid of this $26,000 interest a year. That would go a long ways towards, uh, making the shortfall on the original payment.
So, who's gonna check with the auditor?
I will. I've already got a written one. And I'm the part...
Randy, who are the original two?
I'm sorry?
Who are the original two members that you've located?
There's, uh, a whole list of them. Bill Cox is one of them, Ralph White was one of them. There's, there's a lot of older people that are gone. Jim Beam was on it.
Right.
Bill, or, I'm sorry, uh... Beach, Jim Beach was on it. A lot of those people have expired, and, uh, we're gonna try to put a committee back together.
So, the only two left are Bill and, and Ralph?
That are willing to serve on it, yeah. And they, and they've acknowledged that they would serve on it, and, uh, and I've also talked to, uh, Los Fieretti, he's the one that did the last audit. There is some money in the bank over here to do the paper audit, and so...
$7,000 or so.
About $8,000, so, uh, it's, it's not dead and gone, we just need to revitalize it and then pray on the federal government to see if they'll grant us ownership of it, so that we could probably, you know, try to market it or do something with it to generate some income to service that junior debt. That's, that's the whole gist of all of it.
And Clark, did you have anybody in your area to contribute to this, uh, district one? Is there anybody that you want to report or talk to that wants to be on the committee on this?
For this?
Yes.
You'd ask me once about being on it, is it...
If you do, yeah? If we could get, uh, we need, we're gonna need eight members of people that are willing to, to get out there and do some work, because this is gonna take a lot of hustling to get this done. We're gonna have to contact a lot of political contacts and work through them, get them to help us as much as we possibly can. It's not gonna be an easy thing to get done. But right now, it's the only avenue we've got.
I'd like to tell everybody tomorrow evening at 4:30, we're having another meeting with Nitsin. If I, if anybody wants to be here about our courthouse, and... She's got bids on every, like removing the wires, the painting, the signs, she has bids, I think, about everything we're gonna do. And so, if anybody wants to be here, we'll be here at 4:30 tomorrow.
What about Karen's floor over here, we haven't come in free?
No, we haven't. We haven't got, got to get yet.
Are these, we're about moving over back here?
No, we haven't talked about it yet. But that's something that, you know, we can talk about tomorrow at 4:30. It's All About the Courthouse tomorrow at 4:30. And looking at her bids and seeing what she come up with, and... She said she's gonna get a bid for another painter. I believe, is that right? I think she said she was...
Do you need in here?
But I know she's, she's already met with the sign paper. About getting all the signs made. And she's supposed to be getting on Rick about the rock next week. So, go finish the flower bed. And we'll go inside.
Also have something. As you know, Friday was bad weather. We had a meeting Tuesday, so Paul put me in charge of closing or not closing the courthouse. So, we did close, I did not really have any numbers... So we did close. I did not really have any numbers, but I did find them. And there were two people that did come to work, other than Larry and Ron, which cleared the sidewalks off. And I still haven't found the other person, 'cause I don't know. I just know the vehicle. I will. I've been asking around this morning. I did go around and get all phone numbers of all officials and the employees. And I did ask the officials to, there's another one I would be contacting them, and then they get ahold of their employees. So Tim, you're on my list too, so I know y'all have to come to work or leave your people there one way or the other. Uh, there is another storm possibility coming in this weekend. So I got with Brandy. In my understanding, she was not the safety court director, but apparently she is because it is in the book. Paul did talk to her this morning, so I think Paul and I need to finish following up with her on that to find out. While she tells me one thing, she tells you another. So after the meeting, I appreciate you being able to get that done. We need to have a a safety plan, a safety meeting quarterly. We also need to have members on the group with her also. So the employees of the courthouse, I'll be getting with them to see if we could get five or six to kind of meet in with that. To have a plan, not only for weather, but disaster or anything else that might come up in our area.
Here's to when they they had a storm real, but another lady from, she must have heard, she was in her place, right?
Yes, she was.
When they had a storm coming up, that lady would like me on the scanner and calling people and making sure that people was out to to check and see. And you never you never hear.
The fire department's doing a lot of that.
Well, this girl would hit them up.
She would hit them up, but she's a fire department.
They was out, and you don't never hear anymore if they if they hear the storm coming. You never hear nobody making sure that somebody is out there.
And I think one reason, Jim Bob, you don't hear that as much anymore. It's just like the county guys work for the county. Everybody has a cell phone. And you know, the ra- and I, sometimes everybody receives a cell phone instead of the radio, but. They they are in contact, 'cause our eleven fire departments, they do go to train to watch the weather. And they are the ones that watch the weather and report back, you're out there reporting back to her.
Senator.
And then she goes.
She has it on Facebook. I did find that this morning. It's a Facebook, it's not, I didn't find a webpage per se, but it's on Facebook. We do have a Haskell County Emergency Management Facebook page, and she did ha- she has been posting all of that.
Oklahoma Emergency Services, OES. There's an individual that you follow by name, a Harry Trotter.
Harry Trotter.
He is, um, he was the director for this of this area, and now he's pointing back to the county. But um, he'd be a good point of contact for you and Brandy to get with, to figure out exactly how their system operates. I do know that they have received several hundred thousand dollars with the grants for new radio systems that went not just for law enforcement, but for emergency management, county, the whole county-wide radio system. Went digital because of some grants that are out there through emergency management side. But he is a he's a good point of contact there in you follow to to help with that situation.
As far as back to trying to get the courthouse. Mutilation project, or whatever you wanna call it, get it in better standing. Have we had any activity as to what we're gonna do with all these six buildings that are sitting out here?
You know, but there's.
Three on this side, and three on this side.
You and I talked about that one, Randy. That I told you we had issues with, and we just talked about it, and we'll have to give it a later. We need to go to.
Let's do it.
But and I think Tim mentioned it, we're gonna talk to the DA about these, 'cause I know, I mean, what's in them. He's gonna have to.
Okay, well, we've got we've got DA rooms downstairs. We've got DA rooms out in the parking lot. We've got DA rooms kind of scattered around here. I don't know why we, if we got locking doors downstairs, why we can't.
We can.
Bring everything into one spot.
We can. But these here. Like I said, I've had them like you. I've heard a lot of complaints about them, but I keep hoping. Like I told you before, the state legislators will let us put them all on microfiche, but that's yet to happen. And if it is, you know, we could just do that and burn it, but that's not a possibility at the moment.
I have a question.
I don't know where we put them.
It's not about the building, but it's about us. I just heard it asked about moving over here, and rumor has been floating around, though nobody's talked to me about it. About moving us out and moving the county clerks area over into our area. I'd like to know what the plan is to do with our offices if you do that. And especially in a lot of the fact of all the work that we've done in there in the last year and a half.
Little eyes up right now.
And I feel like the state will wanna know, you know, I need to give them some heads up on what's going on with us.
Ron, all that all that came about was, uh, we're looking at the weight that Karen has to deal with in her office as far as supporting all those heavy books. And and it came up in some of the general conversations that that facility at NX is on concrete floor, where her facility is not. And it was just a brainstorming or a thought or an idea that maybe we should change places with those offices to one, we could accommodate Karen. We actually measured the space, and if we tore some walls out, she'd have more room than what she's got right now. But that would let her have stability as to support all the weight of those books. And and you're gaining about one a month, aren't you? So it's not it's not something that's going away. And then that would give us, hopefully in the transition, we could do some repairs on that one before anybody else went into it.
Where would we be in the interim?
That's the big question, Mark. That's, we hadn't got that far. It was just an idea. And you know how things get around here. A thought or an idea and a comment, and pretty soon it's a fact. But in reality, it's not, which it was just some considerations of trying to figure out how to do something without very much money. And 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 we're still thinking about that. I I asked Karen what she thought about it one day, and she didn't think there was enough room. I mean, we we're just taking it into consideration.
Rick, I got a question. You know, when you walk in the Karen's office to this breezeway tap deal? And you go in there, and there's that little room. You know, there's no way to block off that with the in- interior walls and force force cement in there and then move on from room to room? We talked about that.
Yeah, you can. You'd have to get under there and put a a stem wall of some kind up to backfill and pour against.
But that's what I was thinking.
Every section you did.
The reason I was thinking that, if if like, just the thought now, then I was saying we're gonna do it. It might, if we just one room, you know, we put everything over here and then, you know, just kind of move it around till we got the whole thing forward.
If you moved her over here, though, and you could re- put that back in wood over there, and it wouldn't be near as expensive. Because it wouldn't, she don't, the weight is.
Yeah, I understand that, but and I'm not saying we're gonna do that. It's just a, it's something to think, you know, just a question.
We we did look at that, Paul. We we spent quite a bit of time in looking at the building and. The only thing, I don't think Karen could function in her office with us having half of it, or up or up or. And then get one section done, we have to move her all around again and do it again. It wasn't really practical to do it that way. But it could be done with stem walls underneath it and or sections, but.
'Cause you know, in her office where she actually sits, you know, there's not that much weight. It's most of weights to the west. Just an idea, I mean.
Yeah.
I ain't saying we'll do it. I ain't saying it's a good idea, but it's something to think about.
It's it's hard for somebody to conduct business in a building when it's being repaired at the same time.
Oh, definitely. But we're gonna have to do something.
And I I don't know that, I mean, I go back to, it's gotta be fixed regardless, right?
Correct.
It's gotta be repaired regardless. I don't see why upset our system, upset their system, when it's gotta be fixed regardless.
Because like Jim Bob said, it it would probably, it'd be cheaper to go back with wood than it would be pouring cement. That's only, but we're not, we haven't made any decisions. Nothing's, nothing's fixing to happen at the.
In the long term or short term?
Next two or three days, but you know, it's something we're gonna have to address. Every time you walk in there, you see that baseboard. The floor is a little farther from the baseboard. I mean, it's it's going down. But that's, like I said, once again, that's some things we can talk about tomorrow evening at four thirty. If if people can be here, and if you can't, that's understandable. We're gonna be here at four thirty tomorrow evening, talk about those issues. Is there any more new business? All right, we're gonna move on to item number five, signed appropriation, transfers, checks, received in POs. Need a motion on that. Sandra makes a motion.
I'll see.
A long favor.
Same as over.
Paul stories?
Yes.
Clark, please.
Yes. Item number six is approved for missing proceedings from previous meetings. I'm gonna make a motion to approve the proceedings from last week.
Hey, Paul stories?
Yes.
Sandra? Clark, please.
Yes.
Okay, item number seven is approved blanket POs. We've all looked at them. Everybody's.
A little motion.
Clark makes a motion. I'll second it.
Clark, please.
Yes.
Paul stories?
Yes.
Sandra, thank you.
Item number eight discussed, instead of going after kind of fire farmer. It says four and. Could you fill us, fill the hand in for us?
It's a Honda, two thousand seventeen, four by four. Drank automatic transmission.
That's one of them four-wheel buggies.
Yeah.
Two-seater, four-seater?
Three.
Three, three-seater?
Uh-huh, and it's got a winch on it.
Yeah, there's some of that stuff that they brought in.
Well, I, like I say, we got no problem with buying, but we always ask, I guess you're paying for it out of that tax money? Paying cash, no payments?
But when it'll come back to her, and it was fourteen nine 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 nine. She says it's a little close.
Well, we don't have a bid yet, 'cause we, oh, it's under fifteen thousand?
Yeah. Once.
One dollar.
Well, you can just go buy that sucker then.
Uh-huh, it's too close to fifteen.
I thought if we didn't go fifteen.
It's just a fifty. I mean, it's, you're on borderline.
Are you going after bids? Things we don't, all right, well, technically, we don't know what it's gonna cost, and we're going after bids.
Or specs was, she just wanted to let it check down.
I'm gonna make a motion if they go after bids, 'cause they said that, you know, they have the cash paid for, they won't pay any payments or. Such as that, all right. But just get with Karen and give her the specs, and we'll put it in the paper.
You just came.
Yeah, we didn't know what, we didn't have any idea what go, we don't, we didn't ask them. We love bids in the first three weeks. I might make that story. Yeah.
Paul stories?
Yes.
Clark, please.
All right. We, well, we can't, we have to wait.
Well, I thought Clark was saying, but I thought you were going after.
Well, until I get used to it, you just.
It's not a rush, you just don't keep paying.
I think I was just like, I didn't get it. So these have to be signed in the meeting, and I'm out of the meeting.
I think correct.
I need you to explain that to me. What is this exactly?
It's state collections for the, not for DC.
The DA's.
What's that?
Are you leaving? I suppose you start staying by my lunch. I may not be back.
What is this one called? Is it a leash you got?
It'd be correct. That's two payments on the cattle, but a greater, if they beat down twenty-seven month. Sometime, like during the winter.
Yeah, I'm sure you can.
Yeah, you can, but. Guess we're done.
How often does your water bottle get dropped? On your water bottle, how about, how often do they come? Once a week?
We only get it when we need it, about once a.
What is this, like a grass farm?
Month or something.
They don't have.
Once every two weeks or a month, just whenever. They come to the courthouse every month, but they don't come and argue.
But they don't have like a clean five eights. It's like five eights through three quarter eights or one inch or something, you know?
They're gonna use separated, you know, separating rock.
Tranplant?
Yeah.
Well, they make many different styles and sizes for what it would be.
Well, they make many different styles and sizes, which is what it would be.
We can get our own creek grass, we have one of them.
Oh, what have I got?
We had been talking to, uh, they had.
He's been messed up for a long time.
Oh, yes.
I thought, I call over to tell you, yeah, we're gonna be going next week, next week's tomorrow.
I don't have any time to talk to all this place.
They have to play the foot washing. Oh, they're done screening that dirty gravel.
This, I guess there's county or somebody buying that.
I guess. That's all you get over there, the screens, whatever he screens, it's not washing none of it anymore.
How, how dirty is it? I mean, it's still, still getting on the county road, too.
Oh, yeah, I'm gonna need to start and begin chip with it.
Yeah.
We might use a dirt pad, cause those smell good so much.
Oh, yeah, flows through there good, too, yeah.
It's gotta be clean.
Right, so the land is, yeah.
Actually, we've got six more finishers, but.
That's what I was thinking, not, not the good ones, okay. As far as exits.
More than that, yeah, we're carried.
You know what the bid is? Paul, Neil, or the Asher?
Paul, not exactly, but it's about the same as John E. I mean, you go the, through. Well, sometimes we come down through Ada and come back to the couch or that way, or, you know, you couldn't back down forty. But, uh. I'd say about the same as Oklahoma City, cause when you go turn and go south, Shoney, probably about the distance on the city, so I'm gonna say it's a hundred and five miles. Forty, I don't, exactly.
After enterprises other side west of the city, it's only fifty-one miles to the north.
Well, they got down at Fish Mango, they got that granite rock, it's similar, it's not round. I mean, it's rounded edges, it comes out of the ground also, just like the pea grables. It's similar to, but just a little bit more blockier than not perfect round.
But smooth dents.
It's all smooth and rounded edges and all that.
Yeah, yeah.
Real similar to that.
But I have to.
It's cheap. I know, we all.
I didn't know.
They take those granite down there.
Is it real flat?
Yeah, yeah, you have to sign it. Anything coming out of that account?
That's a key rock.
That's out there in here.
Well, it's been smooth and just like. Just like regular chips. Fine, we have to kind of gum up and that.
They, they surface, you know, like that is in the meal.
You need something up here, too.
I thought she already had that one too on that.
No, we have it signed there. All, all of them, you been doing that?
I don't know if it's any closer to Fish Mango than Asher or not.
Now, these are just, I've just started on that.
That's probably quicker for Asher.
Well, I do, but I, I don't wanna hold everyone up, in that way, if I don't have to hold everyone up. I could go back to her office and finish if I miss it.
Go on with fifty-six or go down ninety-nine.
Cause I've already signed up on this one.
Six, I think, it's north of Asher. Three miles, I think, and back eight, seven, eight.
We wanna do that.
Turn off there, up Saddlewood Tumpka.
Fifty-six, fifty-six, I think it's, uh.
I signed one the other day.
No, it's not on fifty-six, it's on, uh, seven, I think.
Do you save the same?
I did not.
It's still coming out of your account.
It's west of Cleveland, but fifty-six.
I think, cause they won't let us out, but it's over ten thousand. Yeah, we do too, they don't let it all load. They do us same way over in Arkansas. Hold up there, they load.
I've just.
Yeah. And local trucks, they load them down.
You got enough axle on them?
Yeah, they have. They have a lot of axles. They'll have. Six, six axles. Probably four, but five axles in some of them.
Some of them cross their home as much as a similar.
They'll guarantee.
They let them out with.
They let them, yeah.
The leases won't let you out the gate.
Is that where y'all buy long rock yet, the leases?
Just for them and chipping. See, and I said that reed grain's very important, Danny. That's the only time we'll throw them chip anymore is with that, on the upside of log. They're just taking all our money.
They've done a pretty good job.
They're doing a good job getting more and more of it every year.
They've cut a lot of budgets around the state, but they've had to.
And supposed to, like, just like the county, you know, they can only do what they got to do with.
I know, but my problem is is.
I hate to be the bearer of bad news here, but it's just exactly like the county, only on a bigger scale, you can only do what you got to do with.
How did everybody this morning get here?
Everybody drove here.
Well, everybody thinks that they're.
Roads and bridges, if you don't have.
The, the, that's what probably tell you those starving children are more important than your roads and bridges, I mean, you know. You know what I'm saying, it's all relative who you are.
Hey, you made that comment. How, how are you, how are you gonna raise cattle and farm without roads and bridges?
I know what you're saying, Paul, I'm just saying, everybody feels the same way.
Our society cannot run without roads and bridges as we know it today.
Everybody feels that their agenda is.
There you go, I got a few in my pack, I can manage.
That's true, Rock, but hey, we need it all.
We need it all, that's what we need.
That's right.
But what do you start with?
And what was all these seasons? Star pro? The one you've been talking about for a while?
Yeah, they were sixty-something grand dollars that we had to deal with.
Maybe I'll get faster as well.
I'd rather you be slow and not spend our money foolishly. I'd hate to see you sign something you didn't know what you can do.
Yeah.
I think the state set up, what's it, eight hundred million or so shortfall on this budget? That's what they're into.
I heard it's gonna be over that.
Well, originally, Paula, that's, it, it's amazing, depending on who you listen to and where we're at. You know, as after they done last year's budget, the story was is this budget would start eight hundred million dollars short. State treasurer thought it would be somewhere around one point eight billion by the time we got.
I heard one point three billion dollars in a shortfall, and I also heard that they set a budget. And just kind of piece people, but come January, February, you just gonna feel the fact that they's gonna cut some more. Is that true?
I think it's possibly, I think everybody with where revenues are still on a down stream, I think it's possible happening. As she says, there's only so much pie in this dealing, where they cut it out of, you know, it's.
Everybody's getting cut.
Yeah.
Well, everybody.
You think elections are pretty important too, don't you, Paul?
What?
I said, you think your elections are pretty important, don't you?
No, I just think they quit having.
Right now, huh?
Right now, just quit having elections, I'm tired. Let's just shut it down.
That budget got cut pretty big too.
Yeah.
I bet Obama feels the same way right now.
But, but Speaker, Speaker told me straight up, Paul, he thought they would be somewhere between six, seven hundred million dollars short. And if they could, if they could get some consideration on their tobacco tax and some of the other things that they tried to pass last year, that they could, they could bring it down. He really feels like they can bring it down with them three, three hundred fifty million dollars.
Well, you think all the incentives, filing gift to the old field, those tax cuts, artists, or do you look at that awards thing?
Well, there's.
They ain't hurting much, cause they ain't doing nothing.
I, I think there's a number of things, and that's the reason I said, there's some things that have to be done differently. I think the incentives of the oil and gas, I think the live energy, I think there's a number of things, Paul, that they can remove those tax credits from. Not take them away, just do a portion of that. And I think you can balance the budget pretty quick. And until they do those things, it's not gonna be any different. And that's highly unpopular. But I think it'd be more popular than raising taxes.
That's, uh, that's another six hundred, sixty-four thousand dollar question, as you say, is whether it does any good to give them that tax break or not. One side of it, you look like, well, they're gonna drill if it's here anyway, you know. Which only government's thoughts is if we make it, give them a tax break to come to Oklahoma and drill, they're more out to do that. Who knows if that's ever actually worked.
Yeah, but, and like I say, I'm glad I'm not setting up her to make those decisions.
Well, I guess we're down aisle number nine, I'm gonna make a motion with John.
I got a question, Paul.
All right.
You got time, I just gonna ask Sandra, everything running smooth with your hands and?
Yeah, everything's going pretty smooth. I'm just letting them go as they are and we have a, me and Tracy and Teresa have a meeting every morning. Let's see what, what we're going on, what's been called in, but yeah, I enjoy it.
Actually got them road graders fired up and stuff.
Yeah, they're all, I took them down this morning, so they're gonna, see, you should get them a little bit of sugar. Get them going.
I do think that was a good, um, good thing, you was talking about, Sandra, about the safety stuff. And I'm surprised that the insurance people don't require you to have it more often and then quarterly. We're every day, safety for us, if we go out on a job, we gotta have a tailgate, but I know we're different than the county. We told that a lot. Still, safety is safety, it don't matter where you are.
But we're gonna, we're, my, uh, including me, are gonna have a vest. And eyeglasses and earplugs, uh, they, brain coat or what they need, it's not really a big expense when you get online and check. But it's basically for them, if they get out, if someone doesn't see them with something bright, then, you know, it could be a hazard. Safety's a big issue all over and, you know, for the weather, when you're around, you know, the way tornadoes come.
It is a big deal everywhere, but you still gotta keep some common sense.
Yeah, oh, yeah, and it's, you know, it's like Friday, it was, they thought we'd get that much snow. You know, and we're looking ahead to Friday and Saturday, so, you know, that's the reason why I went around this morning and got numbers.
Well, they're claiming around the seventeenth of the month, we're gonna have a major ice storm.
Well, that's just next week.
Did you get your trout tray?
No.
But anyway, if anybody needs anything or decent question answer, just ask me, if I don't know it, I'll get it for you. I'm here to, to help everybody else and we'll all go from there.